It's now six o'clock. Good evening. Welcome to Swanee County Board of County Commissioners, October 2017, regular scheduled board meeting. Tonight I've asked County Administrator Randy Harris to open us with the indication and the pledge.
Father, can we praise you and we thank you for your love and your mercy, your kindness, your patience. We ask you to be with us this evening and give us wisdom and guidance and counsel from above in the decisions that need to be made. We ask that you would help us to help our community, give us wisdom and guidance. But we know that there's a lot of pain and suffering throughout the state, the nation, the world. We ask that you bring about peace and comfort and healing for its needs. In these things we praise you in Jesus' name.
Amen.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item on the agenda is approval of minutes, October 3, 2017, regular scheduled board meeting. Have any changes? Here none. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is that you, Mr. Sessions? Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Sessions, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Moving on to consent items. We got two through nine. Anything that needs to be pulled for discussion? Here none. Do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Approve.
I'll second it.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Sessions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, moving on to proclamation and presentations. Adopt a resolution proclaiming the week of October 16 through the 21st, 2017, as Working Forest Week. We got Mr. Paul Williams, Senior Forester for the Florida Forest Services, presenting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, staff, on behalf of the Governor and the Commissioner of Agriculture and the Director of the Board of Forest Service, I want to thank the Swanee County Commission for all the work that they do and all the citizens of Swanee County that are taking forestry in this wonderful state. And I thank you so much for hearing this resolution. And if I could, could I read this into the record?
Yes, sir.
Whereas Florida forests and forest-related industries are vital for today's living and tomorrow's use and cover 17.3 million acres, which represent nearly half of Florida's total land area. And whereas Florida's working forests help protect valuable natural areas from the threat of conversion to other uses such as residential and commercial development and provide numerous environmental and ecosystem benefits such as improved air quality and improved wildlife habitat. And whereas the presence of healthy, sustainable forests is vital for protection and conservation of Florida's water resources. And whereas Florida's working forests provide societal benefits such as political spaces for beauty and recreation. And whereas Florida's working forests are carefully and professionally managed to buy timber products while sustaining and protecting renewable forest resources for future generations. And whereas Florida's working forests generate more than $16 billion in economic activity annually, provide jobs for more than 80,000 forest agents, and provide materials to more than 5,000 types of consumer goods. Now therefore, it be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners, Swanee County, Florida, to hereby designate the week of October 16 through 21st, 2017, as Working Forest Week in Swanee County, and congratulate forest owners and forest tree practitioners who grow, harvest, and replant healthy trees in order to protect and maintain Florida's working forests for present and future generations.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you so much. And again, for the record, I am Paul Williams, Swanee County Forester with the Florida Forest Service. I replace Brian Cobble, who I'm sure a lot of you know. Did a great job for 13 years in this county. The history of Swanee County goes way back. Forestry has always been a part of this county, and I know your county historian and other folks and friends and family did tell you all about it. But really, this is the crossroads of forestry in Florida. It's the heart of forestry in Florida. And I do want to personally thank you again for all the hard work you do and to thank you for what you do for the citizens of this great county.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Do I have any questions from the board? Does I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming, seconded by Commissioner Hale. Any further discussion? Here none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Mr. Williams, thank you for coming out tonight. Moving on to staff reports. Item number 11, Catherine Allen, Swanee County Extension Director.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. Just a note, if you guys haven't been out by the office lately, you might have noticed that we got some new signage up. So that really helps to identify the location a little bit better. So real pleased with that. All of those signs were purchased through UF. So was real pleased to get those at no cost to the county. Right now, our agents are heading out towards the Ag Expo in Moultrie, Georgia. We have a building there through UF and are helping to man and make connections there. So we'll be there today, tomorrow, and Thursday. Also coming up, just so that you know, at the Swanee Valley Ag Extension Center, they are actually turning into a full-fledged research center as of November 1. So you know that we've gone back and forth. And for those of you in the audience, some of you might have known it as the experiment station or the research center, but then the Swanee Valley Ag Extension Center, but now it's back to a full-fledged research center. So we're real excited about that. And that starts November 1. But out there, we've traditionally done our fall harvest. And this is where we invite youth, not only from our own county, but also from surrounding counties, to have an ag experience. So not only do they go through, we call it a corn maze, but it's really Florida gentleman's mother thing to do there. They go through the maze, they get a chance to pick a pumpkin in the pumpkin patch, which is really a board, it's not a pumpkin. But we talk about that. And each of them gets to take one home. And then we always do a third commodity. This year, we'll be doing sweet potatoes. And they will also, they'll not only get to dig their own sweet potatoes, but they'll also get to taste it. So that's a great experience for the kids because a lot of kids, even in a rural community, don't always understand the importance of agriculture. And so this is a really important time for kids to have that experience. And if you have a chance to come out, we'd love to have you. We do have a 4H day. So if you can't come out in the morning, if you want to come out in the afternoon, I'll get you the date of that 4H day. I think it's the last Monday in October. Then if that works out better for you, everybody's welcome. So come on in. Also, we're gearing up for reporting, not only what we have done this past year, but also planning for next year. So if there, we always utilize advisory committees to help us plan, guide our programmatic efforts, not only overall extension, but also programmatically. And so we do utilize that input. But if you have additional input of things that you'd like to see us being involved with in terms of programming, educational programming, I know yours, but just let me know because this is the time that we start scheduling some of those things a year in advance. So we try to get some of those things in the calendar so that we can start promoting. Also, you might have noticed our center pivot. I think each of you got sent that in your inboxes, in your email. I did leave some copies, if you're not on our email list, out on the counter out there. It's just a black and white copy. But if you want to give your email address, we can sign you up for that. But on the front cover, we've been starting to talk about some of the success stories that we've had here extension. And this one we're highlighting is actually a partnership through Workforce. So we're looking at helping to guide people who are looking to get into the Workforce. Many cases, the ones that we're working with are either teens or young adults that don't have a lot of work experience. So this gives them that work experience. And so we've seen some real successes there. So I hope that you'll take a look at that. Otherwise, just got back from vacation. So we're at full staff. My administrative assistant has been tremendous in getting us organized, things that we've been saying we need to get done. And so it's really, it's happening. So I can answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Catherine?
No, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to general business. Item number 12, discuss with possible board action, business incentive grant application by the works. Dr. Alvin Jackson, Economic Director, presenting.
(inaudible) we have a great opportunity. We have a beautiful Swanee County. We have a incentive application. According to the Business Incentive Program, reference in level 2016, that this is Swanee County has a system to be set with base value an applicant could receive. And this particular project is called the Works. It's an experiment, a manufacturer of structural products.
Might I be on? Give me a little bit more.
I'm here. You're close to me, so.
No, it's not on.
No.
There's not a button on that one.
(inaudible) Talk loud.
It's Sunday morning, you're preaching. Let's hear it. Yeah, give me, give me, give me the voice. Give me the voice.
In accordance with the Business Incentive Program, referenced by Resolution 2016-06, Swanee County has established point system for determining a base value of an applicant to receive a Swanee County Business Incentive Grant. This particular project is named The Works. It's a manufacturer of structural products. And for the points awarded, target industry manufacturing, we have two points. Capital investment of about $4.3 million, $4,319,000. That's four points. The facility size, they're expanding 50,000 additional square feet. They will create an additional grand stock, 100 new jobs. The average wage is $47,840.
Good wages.
They are also located in the hub zone, the southern hub zone that we have. So they receive two points from that. Which their total points is 14 points, and it entitles them to up to four years of rebate of their agile room and tangible taxes. And that total maximum possible incentive is $96,282. And basically spread out over seven years, Mr. Harris, $13,754 each year. And remember, it's based on performance, creating the jobs, capital investment. Now, I always like to look at some of the rippling effect. So they have about 50, the board count, which once this project is completed, they will have 150 direct jobs, which would equate, and indirect and induced jobs, about 181 jobs overall. The sales output will be about $26 million. The compensation or total salaries for the direct, indirect, and induced is about $13,900. And so the rippling effect, just, I might not go through the numbers, basically, limited service restaurants will benefit, regional managing offices, full-service restaurants, other fabricating metal product manufacturing, which they would be purchasing products from, actual offices of position with this benefit. There will be other local residential buildings in, well, there's wired telecommunications carriers will also benefit, supermarkets will benefit, and colleges and universities, and even religious organizations will benefit from this project. So I'm recommending that we approve this Business Incentive for the Works.
Is that all you have? Any questions for Dr. Jackson?
If I do, Mr. Chairman. When did they think they would have the project done, that they would be hiring these extra 100 people? Is it in here? Do we have a date?
They're going to face it on two years. So about the year, I think I said?
2019.
2019, okay.
Fully staffed and fully built by then.
Is that all your questions?
That's all I had, yes.
Anyone else have any questions?
All that I have to say is, I'm going to have to recuse myself of this vote, simply because I have business affiliation with this particular company and potential conflict ventures.
All right. Fill out a form.
Yeah, fill out a form.
Mr. Chairman, I just have, when you say that over two years, during the two-year period, that mean that these jobs, these extra 100 jobs, which will bring a total of 181. It'll be phase, take a two-year phase for that? So you're looking at probably 50, 51 employees per year, maybe, or?
Mr. Chairman.
You said over two-year period.
Yeah, the grant, I mean, it won't, it really won't take effect, the permanent jobs in 2018, but the beginning of 2019 is when the jobs will be created. And then I think it's either September or October, I can't remember, is when it's projected to be completed in 2019.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve?
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming. Got a second. Got a second by Commissioner Sessions. Any further discussion? Here none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming.
Moving on to item 13, discuss with possible board action, extension of the medical marijuana dispensary moratorium for an additional three months. County Attorney Jimmy Pervat.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. If you recall, back in, last year, they passed the, you know, the amendment. And then in March of this year, we passed a moratorium waiting for the legislature to come up with whatever program they were going to have with regard to treatment centers as well as dispensaries. Well, in June of this year, legislature met in special session and they passed Senate Bill 8A, which basically took away and exempted everything with regard to the treatment centers and the dispensaries. There's only a couple of items that they left for us to be able to decide. And the decision basically comes down to whether or not you want to ban medical dispensaries and treatment centers from the county, or, in the alternative, you have to treat them, permit them, I mean, give them permits, and locate them in the same fashion as you would a pharmacy. There is no restriction you can put on the number of facilities. You either ban or don't ban. Staff and I had been going through, and we were, you know, pursuant to your direction, we were trying to look at where we could use the LDRs to locate different things and put restrictions on those types of things in various classifications. The four classifications in the county where it would actually fit in, now that it is determined to be a, like a pharmacy, are commercial neighborhood, commercial general, commercial intensive, and then commercial shopping center. Because of what happened, you know, in June, and then it took effect in July, you know, staff and I again looked at it from just that perspective. And really, the only heartburn that we have in an area would be the commercial neighborhood zoning classifications. We determined that if you're going to have these things, you know, you still want to have them in the areas where there's more commercial intense activity. And in a commercial neighborhood, it's not designed to be commercially intense. It's supposed to be just small things that would benefit and fit into the neighborhood. You know, when you talk about commercial neighborhood and small areas, you know, you're talking about convenience stores, you know, that type of thing where you run and it serves just that general community. The problem is that in our LDRs, we have, we don't have a definition of pharmacies. What we have is a commercial retail sales of, and then category, 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 and drugs. And so that's as close as we come to a definition of a pharmacy. So what we're kind of looking for is guidance to move forward now that we have this new, you know, plan out here. We can do it by several differing things. And what, you know, you have to decide first is whether or not you want to ban them. If you ban them, I can draft an ordinance. We have to go through the hearing process, two hearings, and they're banned, period. Plain and simple. I will say that there's one community that, DeSoto County, they took the position that they would ban them, but they were going to do a temporary ban because they were hoping that there would be some legislative action coming up in the next session that would better define the locales of where it can be placed. Right now, the only restriction on placement, you know, as a pharmacy, is that you cannot place one within 500 feet of a public or private school. And that's, that's it. And so DeSoto County was hoping that they could at least get some expansion on that. So they banned them until that decision would be made, and then they re-review it later. Looking at what we have with the moratorium, I said, well, we can still do that and extend it during the period of time. And that's what I put, titled it on the agenda here this evening, but it may not be the way to, you know, really go about doing it. But y'all have to make that decision. The other thing that has been interesting around the state is that a lot of counties are just taking no action. And wherever their pharmacies are, that's where the dispensaries will go. And so they're taking no action and allowing the LDRs to go, just like they are. Columbia County did the same thing, and the language that they have in their LDRs is the same as ours because it was all drafted, you know, around the same time. But if that's what you want to do, is kind of a no-action type thing, I think the better course would be my last recommendation, which would be to look at the LDRs and really define what a pharmacy is, and then get what an MNTC is and a dispensary is as a definition. And then go back and look and say, at these commercial neighborhoods. If you're going to have them out in commercial, general, intensive shopping centers, it is staff's and my recommendation that that's where you want to have them, and there's more intensive areas, and then leave the neighborhood alone. So we would have to go back and make, you know, a change in there. So I kind of outlined five choices there at the bottom of this second page. And y'all give me direction on where you would like to go so I could draft the ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, I, did I say something?
Yes, sir. Go right ahead, Mr. Fleming.
And he was looking at, looking at these five different categories that he's got. But also, when he said about schools, a thousand feet of school, what about a place of worship? Because, because sometime in these shopping malls, they do have these type places, the place of worship there, and that could cause a problem.
Well, under the way the law is written right now, it is not an exemption.
Okay.
Within 500 feet, I mean, there's no restriction. The only 500-foot restriction is with public and private schools from elementary on, you know, all the way up. But, you know, that's, that's one of the things that DeSoto County discussed extensively, was, you know, whether it would be close to churches, recreational parks, hospitals, other residential districts. And the last one was, how close do you put the dispensaries to each other? You know, I mean, but none of those guidelines are currently in the statute. And there are none. So that's why they took the unique thing of banning it until giving the legislature a chance to maybe look at it again. Because they were concerned about those same types of things, Commissioner Fleming.
A question?
Yes, sir.
Sessions.
A couple of years ago, when it all started, I read something, and maybe they've passed through this, that there was a per capita deal where, you know, it was only so many per capita.
Yes, sir.
And did they still have provisions and that for that?
No, sir, they didn't. If you look at the second part of the package that I gave, it's a summary of all of the provisions they have in there. All, those were the things that were generally, everybody thought they were going to consider. When it came down to the end, though, they just wiped them all out. You're either all in or all not in your county. Now, having said that, the five that started, now there's seven, and I think as of last week, there's actually 10 different folks that have the, you know, that'll have this vertical integration to be able to do all this. And there are restrictions there on how many they can have in a particular zone based on the population. The state will be divided up into five different zones. In our zone, you know, there, everybody will have so many per zone. Now, quite frankly, you know, with Tallahassee already having four or five popped up in Tallahassee for these differing people.
In their own zone.
And they're in our zone, there's probably not a real good chance that, you know, we're going to have one relocated here anytime soon. But as the population does increase, and as the population that gets put onto the roll, you know, you enroll under the program, as that goes up per 100,000, everybody gets additional spots. So, you know, we're probably looking on down the road, you know, once the registry numbers, you know, increase. I marked in yellow for you there on the, you know, the guidelines there.
My only concern is our logistical situation. We're in a good spot for distribution, so that's my only concern right there.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Richardson.
Ms. Pervat.
Yes, sir.
My concern, obviously, you know, take a kind of a neutral approach to this and sense to say, even from a good Christian Baptist background, that if we can get, God-made plant, if we can get medicine out of it, then that's a good thing. But my concern is, is the But my concern is the growing part of this whole thing, which is not addressed into anything that we're talking about right now.
And we won't have the opportunity to address that.
So the agricultural part of it, where it's grown and processed, I would assume processed being part of that growing, that's something that the state will determine?
Yes, sir. They're going to outline for that. As long as it's at this particular time, they're taking control of where they're going to be located through a permitting process they have in Tallahassee. You know, we looked at this a couple of years ago, and we had a nice ag area classification, for them to do what would be outdoor growth. But the industry is really not going to work that way. Everything's going to be inside, in grow houses, and that's how it's going to be contained and controlled. And it's going to be with permits from the state, and it won't be something that'll be a permit from the county.
I understand that. As far as what we're talking about today, we can, we do have the right to pull commercial neighborhoods off of this list where they can be placed in.
Yes, sir.
And restrict them only to commercial, general, intensive. Does that mean that we can restrict them even more to either intensive or shopping center?
Yes, sir, you can. But if you...
All pharmacies.
Yeah.
But you have to do it all to all pharmacies.
Yeah, all pharmacies when you do that. So that's where, you know, when we were, staff and I were thinking, that when you're talking about commercial neighborhood, you're not going to have a pharmacy, big Walgreens or CVS, put in that type of location. But with the language that we have in here that just says, you know, "commercial retail sale of drugs," gives somebody an idea that maybe they could push or challenge that. It is not what is the stated intent, and I provided that language for you also in the packet there, you know, the stated intent for it to be less intensive, you know, what would happen in a retail for, you know, a small neighborhood. So we thought that removing it from that particular area, but again, put it into the more commercial intensive areas, which you would expect a pharmacy, you know, to be. Because when these things were written, you know, 20 years ago, you know, everybody was thinking, "commercial sales of, you know, food, drugs, things like that." They were thinking in their minds, writing it, of a convenience store. That was what their description of a convenience store is. But it didn't say convenience store. It just said, "commercial sale," you know, so...
So when we're talking about a treatment center, is it more of a medical center? Or is it like a place that would find its home better in a medical...
Medical treatment centers are going to fall, you know, with, under a different classification. There'd be doctors' offices and that type of thing. What we're concerned with...
The retail outlet.
Yeah, a retail outlet. But what we're talking about is a retail outlet, you know, like a pharmacy.
You have treatment centers listed in here, and I just want to make sure that I understand that we're not talking about treatment centers at this point. We're talking about the retail pharmacies.
We had put a moratorium on both.
Okay.
You know, but they're not going to let you put restrictions on the treatment centers. But with the dispensaries, we can put that restriction and at least move them around.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Pruvet.
Yes, sir.
We still have the option to do number three there, just to reset it, correct?
Yes, sir.
Because I know it's still a hot topic in the legislation, and there's a lot of people working on this. And I agree, I just don't think there's enough guidelines for it quite yet. But I'm not willing to do nothing or ban it, I don't think. I mean, I don't know the feeling of the board, but maybe we just reset it and see, and hope they do something and make some decisions that will help us moving forward with this.
Well, I know we've talked about, and I put in here 90 days, but if you're going to give the legislature an opportunity to look at it, I mean, they don't meet until January. And that's right at the end of the 90 days. So, and they have 60 days to meet. So, you know, really, if you're going to do another moratorium to extend it from September, you'd probably need 180 days to have everything at least complete, to see what their direction would be.
Yeah, but I mean, you're looking all the way to July before they implement anything, aren't you?
Probably.
Yeah. And I guess, if we do that, though, and someone wanted to have interest in it, we could revisit it at that time? I mean, couldn't we as a board?
Certainly. That's, like I said, DeSoto County took just a little bit differing approach to it. Instead of having a moratorium and extending the moratorium, because there are semi-rules, you know, kind of out there with the locations. But that's what they were concerned about, was with the locations. The Department of Health hasn't 100% completed all of the rules yet. They're actually due November 9th, I believe, is the date, that they have to be finished with them. But, you know, we don't know what those are going to be either.
Right.
Mr. Chairman.
One second. I just got a question from Ms. Pruvet. If we go with revising the LDRs, doesn't that in a sense place a moratorium on it to an extent?
Yes, sir. Typically, what happens is, you know, when you announce in a public meeting like this that we're changing the LDRs, and then we're going to be changing it on this topic, people can't then run down there and file applications because we've made an announcement that we are going to make that change. And if they do submit an application, it would have to fit under the change.
Under the change.
So if we picked item five and we announced that tonight, it in effect is a moratorium, but it's, it is, but it isn't.
It is, but...
If somebody wanted to sue us over, well, you know, they have the right because they filed a, you know, an application before the actual change took place, case law would then step in and say, tough break, you know.
What's the timeline on redoing the LDRs? Because you're going to have to have your public hearings.
Right. From the time that we, time that we make the application, the fastest we could do it is run it through in 45 days. Typically, if we don't catch, and we're kind of in the middle of the month, so, you know, really, a 60-day window is what it would take to get this done.
So 60 to 90 days would be a safe area?
Yes, yes.
So to be on the safe side, would it benefit us to do a 90-day moratorium and give you the direction to go ahead and start revising the LDRs?
In this, like number five?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I mean, you can do that. But like I said, I think number five has the same effect as setting a moratorium while it is being developed.
Is, once, if we do that, excuse me, if we do it and pick number five, I think, to go along with your question, is there a certain time period before we have to make changes? Do we have 45? Is that, you have to do it in 45 days?
We have as long as it takes for us to get it back on the agenda.
That's what I'm asking.
Right.
Whatever that time is.
Then the 45 days was the quickest we could get it on there.
Because of the two minutes. Anyway, that's going.
Ms. Harris.
Mr. Chairman, you actually spoke to the very thing I was going to speak to on the LDRs. Yes, that's one way to get there and accomplish the timeframe without a limitation to 45 or 60 or 90. It will be on the agenda whenever it's ready. Having said that, I think ultimately everyone recognizes that the state has preempted local communities from doing much of anything. And what I envision is not that they're going to loosen our ability, but, you know, they're taking the very conservative approach, and they're saying, hey, this has been approved, so we're going to allow it to occur. You know, with one exception, the concern that's been expressed about location or the distance from schools, I don't know that any one statewide is going to have the ability to do much of anything. So I think the conservative approach for us would be to go ahead and just approach it with the LDR change, give us some time. But I was going to say as well that I think the six-month timeframe is really what we need to be considering, because that's how long it's going to be before the legislature has communicated anything back to us.
Anyone else comment, questions?
Mr. Chairman, one more comment, question.
Yes, sir.
A lot was talked about during the annual conference. We had the breakout sessions about this particular issue and concern over lawsuit, potential lawsuits counties may face for going back and changing later on down the road, their decision to either ban or not ban. So my concern here is this, is if we expect the state to come down with some more clarification on these issues, why would we go in and begin to adjust our LDRs now? Why not put a more, set a moratorium out long enough to wait until the state decides whether they're going to do anything, and then address the LDRs?
Ms. Richardson, quite frankly, my communication has been that you're not going to see the state loosen that stuff up.
Okay.
What they're really setting and taking more time is going to be, is going to be on the growing end and treatment center end, and how to, you know, work with that. It's all part of the same package. You're not going to see really changes here. You know, when the voters, statewide, 71, 72%, and even locally, we're at 68, 69%, you know, the voters want it, and they're going to have it, you know.
I understand.
I mean, if I'm understanding the LDR changes, even if we change them when the state comes back and says something different, our changes aren't really going to be affecting anything other than it's not going to be in a commercial neighborhood. And that's, it's not just this, it's anything. So it's not, it's not something huge we're undoing in our LDRs.
I just want to make sure that I understand that we're not getting the cart before the horse in this. And if y'all believe that, two of you said that you don't believe the state's going to make any changes.
I'd rather be out in front of the state on it. Just go ahead and set our precedent, and if they change it after the fact, then so be it. But I really don't, I feel like they dealt with it last year, and they're probably done with this part of it.
Mr. Chairman, based on that, I move that we just revise the LDRs, pick number five, and make the changes to define the pharmacy, medical marijuana dispensaries, and take them out of commercial neighborhood classifications.
You don't need a motion, do you? You just need direction?
I just need direction. And then y'all will submit, and you authorize me to submit an application, you know, on y'all's behalf for that, because you submit the application, and it goes through the process first, you know, planning and zoning, and then it comes back to y'all for final approval.
Okay.
Everyone good with that?
Yeah.
Or at least that?
Yeah.
All right. Number five, Ms. Pruvet.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, oh, I'm sorry. I seen you stick your hand up.
Inside the city, though. We won't affect that.
I see what you're saying.
And the only one is, is CVS. It's commercial.
Moving on to item 14, discuss possible board action, purchase of knuckle boom truck included in the budget. County Administrator Randy Harris.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners touched on this in the last meeting, albeit we were not quite as prepared as we are tonight. And tonight, ultimately, what my request is going to be is that you authorize us to go to bid for the purchase of either a knuckle boom truck or two knuckle boom trucks. And I'd like to elaborate just a bit. During the budget workshop phase, we had turned in a worksheet with the typical knuckle boom truck, which is a 26-yard lightweight knuckle boom truck. In the workshop, though, we asked that, we were trying to guesstimate based on information that we've been communicating with vendors on, on the cost of the heavier duty and larger box knuckle boom trucks, which would be a 40-yard. So the board agreed to change the, or add additional funding to bring that up to 205,000. We have now traveled and looked at the larger trucks. The difference is not only the box on the back, it doesn't just have a larger box to carry more cubic yards of material, but it has a much heavier duty boom and motor that operates the boom. That is a critical piece of the entire equipment. The storm that hit, I think it was two days after we began our cleanup, we broke one of the booms right off the truck that we have. We've broken those booms before. They are not designed to do what we have to do when we're cleaning up behind a storm. So we really need to start buying the heavier duty trucks. We need to do it over a long period of time. But I would submit to you that we would be well-served as a county if we go ahead and consider obtaining two of these things now instead of just one. What we have done historically is purchase these through the solid waste department. And we run them for a few years, and then we take them and move the older ones over into the road department. We've been doing that for years. And that's what I would suggest that we do with these. But having said that, if we have an event, then we will take those heavier duty trucks out of solid waste, go use them for the cleanup, and then put them back. Because we've got lighter trucks in the road department right now. So we ran numbers on leases. Lease trucks were from $228,000 to $238,000 in our cost over three years. And after the three years, again, most of these are lease purchase options that we do through a third party. We would own the trucks after three years. Lowest price we got was 228, the highest was 238. If we purchase the trucks outright, I believe that we can do that closer to the range of $215,000. If we're going to do it through the solid waste department like we initially planned, we'd be using funds that we already have in solid waste. So I'd like for the board to entertain the possibility of going ahead and getting two of them, so that we're better equipped to handle storm events when they come, and they will, and they have. And then later, we would rotate them out, but they'd be readily available if we needed them next year during hurricane season. And I'll need authorization to bid, because I can't, the best price I don't believe right now was on the Sheriff's Association contract. I think we can do better with an outright bid on these. And I would say that because we've communicated enough with various vendors and manufacturers. I just think that's going to be the case.
Any questions from the board, Ms. Harris?
One, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
How many boom trucks do we currently have, both, at both facilities?
There's six or seven. Some of those are...
In operation?
Backup. Yeah, some of them are in operation.
Okay, all right.
Great question. Some of them are in operation, some of them are backup trucks, just spares in case we have to run them. And it's kind of shameful, the condition of some of them, but we're afraid to get rid of them, surplus some of them, because if we need them, you know, we just do whatever we have to do.
They are in solid waste budget, they are budgeted on.
These would be in the solid waste budget, because we've got the funds there to purchase
Any other questions?
I don't have a problem with going out to bid. So we just need authorization, so if anyone wants to make a motion.
Make a motion, go out to bid.
Make a motion.
Got a motion by Commissioner Sessions.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fleming. Authorization to go out to bid on two knuckle boom trucks. When you bid it out, can you have them bid our price on two? And if it's a different price, if we just bought one? Just that way we know?
Yes, sir. It's about a $3,500 difference.
Okay.
I mean, I've talked these people to death. I've been through all the numbers on them.
Gotcha.
The discount, that's each truck, so the discount would be about $7,000 if we buy two.
But the 215 is buying two?
The 215 is a good number for one truck.
For one truck, okay.
All right, I got a motion, I got a motion by Commissioner Sessions, second by Commissioner Fleming. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right. Moving on to, let's see, item 15 has been pulled to discuss at a later date. Moving on to additional agenda items, we had two. One of them is authorized chairman, county administrator... One of them is authorized Chairman, County Administrator, and County Attorney to discuss railroad spur agreement with Clausner for his final decision. Turn our attention back to Mr. Harris.
Mr. Chairman, I would emphasize final decision. That's important. Mr. Vat will tell you that, you know, in the past, we've had discussions on a number of issues associated with the development agreement back, you know, before Clausner even started building. And we have found over the years that it is helpful to have authorization to conclude a discussion and make a final decision with the parties that are actually present at that meeting, and that's why we're making that request. I think this will help us to go ahead and move from where we are right now and get us on about either building a spur or not building one. I am hopeful, I'm optimistic, that we will build the spur. And there are lots of parties at state level and all over the place that continue to call us asking where we are on this thing. So I'm just requesting this authorization for the three of us to go in there and have a meeting with them and make a decision.
I don't have a problem with it. I'd like, if I'm available, to go, be there.
Well, we can't do that unless we have a public hearing, a public meeting to do that.
Right.
And I wouldn't.
To, to, I mean, what aspects, I mean, can you be specific as far as what decisions maybe, looking at the attorney may want to ask this question?
Well, let me just say this, let me say this, because I've said this before publicly. We want an agreement ultimately that states clearly that if the company or companies, they're actually, you know, Clausner is one, Matt goes another. If they fail to perform in accordance with the agreement that they made when we were applying for the grants. And in effect, then, the grant administrator comes back to us and says, the county has to refund those grant funds. Then they would be obligated to pay us if that were to occur, if they failed to perform. And what I mean by fail to perform is rate the number of jobs that they said that they were going to create because the grant itself, the dollar amount is predicated on the number of new jobs that's included in the application. That's really the summary version of it. And I think that we are very close to wrapping it up. But I think it's going to be helpful if we have the authorization to go ahead and just have that meeting and, and wrap it up.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask what the grant, those grant funds that are refundable, potentially refundable, how much they would equate to total up at?
Oh, goodness.
One point eight.
It would be, it's, we've got over three million dollars right now that, because we had, it's the bid for the construction, and then it's also the seven-hundred-and-seventy-something thousand we've got to send to CSX combined with that. And then there's an additional amount of money that we will have in inspections that will have to be added to this as well that I'll be bringing back to the board. So, it's over three million dollars.
That's the total grant, or is that the reimbursable amount? I thought, I thought just a CDVG was?
These are all economic development grants.
Grants, yeah.
It's just that they're coming from different agencies. Two of them within the state, and another one is being administered through the state, but it's federal funding.
Yeah.
Is, does, Mr. Vat, does the, this Clausner or any company, depending on whatever, when, whenever, however, can they be protected under bankruptcy law?
If they, the answer to that is always yes. And if they seek any kind of bankruptcy protection under the participating party agreements, they're automatically in default and, you know, go from there. But that's, that's not really what we're concerned about. I mean, they're.
I'm just wanting to make for sure that.
Can I add, just, it's, it's semi-humorous to me. Because when you're dealing with a company that's European style of business, they make a deal and they always come back at the very last minute and want to make something else. They want to have something else. And it's just a style of doing business that's European style. And we just need to have the authority, like we have used before, to stop them from keep coming and saying, well, we need one more thing. You know, and if we have that authority, then we can sit there, you know, and say, no. But if we don't have that authority, they make an offer, and we are obligated to keep bringing it back, keep bringing it back and discussing. So what we're really trying to do is just short-circuit that. We're, we're very close, and we just need the authority to say, no.
It's basically a negotiating tool. When we sit down with them, we need to be able to look them in the eye and say, this is his last chance.
Yeah.
This is actually predicated on prior experience.
Yes.
Yes, we, we, we had to do this once before.
Yeah. This, this is back before when I had lots of hair. I've been through the.
Mr. Chairman, I'm okay with it.
Say, make a motion. You need one.
Yes, I need a motion to approve it. Was that a motion?
It was.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Hale, second by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussing? You're none. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. All right. And second additional agenda item is approval of membership dues to the Florida Association of County for year two thousand seventeen and eighteen.
That's all we need?
Who'd you approve?
Second.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Fleming. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Moving on to item seventeen, public concerns and comments. Oh, we pulled fifteen. Yeah, we're going to discuss it at a later date. Anyone wishing to speak, if you just make your way to the podium?
Name and address, please, sir.
You beat me to it. You want this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is Robert Ford, eight-eight-ninety-six, one-thirty-fifth, U.S. Live Vote, Florida. I just want to announce, I noticed in the lobby, they already got the flyers out there in the lobby, and I left, in addition to the flyers, I left some of the parade participation application. The parade itself would be on Veterans Day, November eleventh, at nine o'clock, lined up at the elementary school. And they will proceed through town on the normal route. So I know it's a weekend, it's a Saturday, but Veterans Day is Veterans Day regardless of what day of the week that falls on, on. So it's a one way that I feel that you can support veterans, show some support for veterans and military personnel by coming out to the parade. Again, I would ask that you, your organization, take one of these forms and try to solicit someone to put a float car, motorcycle, walk banners, or whatever, to show some kind of patriotism in the parade. That's it. I just got one other comment. I just made an observation. When I look at the rostrum, I think I missed the new county's memo on facial hair. You see, Mr. Vat, he's got a little small one, but Mr. Richardson and Commissioner Hale is completely absent.
We're new.
Facial hair. As we say in the military, they're completely out of uniform. I guess by the next meeting, I guess I'm going to kind of give me a kind of beard to kind of protect you guys.
We're the new guys.
Yeah, we're the old grizzled veterans.
We're shaking things up up here.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Ford, where would they get the registration forms? Do you have any available online or in a PDF format where I can make it available?
No, but you could call Ellis at the county office.
Yeah.
And he can probably scan it, scale it and email it to you.
Thank you.
And you can drop, anyone that fills one out can drop them off in his office as well.
Okay, thank you.
These are armor beards.
Anyone else wishing to speak? You're none. Move on to Administrator comments. Got anything, Mr. Harris?
Just a couple of comments, Mr. Chairman. I'll give you a quick update on a lengthy meeting that we had yesterday with DOT regarding the traffic signals or potential traffic signals at the interchange of I-ten and one-twenty-nine. It was an exciting meeting. We started with a study that they had sent us a copy of. Let, let me just give you the punchline. Punchline is they agreed that they would put the traffic signals in the five-year plan. With caveat that they would conduct another study between now and that five-year timeframe. Now, let me just share this with you. They did tell us at the end of the meeting that the information that they utilized in the study was absent two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen so far as crash data. The reason for that is that apparently they don't obtain a completed calendar year's data until nine months later. So we know, you know, you just count back, that's all of sixteen and seventeen that they don't have. We are going to do our best to help obtain accurate information, and let me just say, they're talking about certified data. So we're going to go ahead and try to clean up some data that we had obtained through the Florida Highway Patrol, and we'll forward that to them when we have it narrowed down because it was a little bit broader than the intersection. But in any event, I was encouraged with the outcome. We've been trying, I know Commissioner Fleming and I met with the traffic safety people, I guess it's been five years ago, about the time that we were talking to them about the big tower lights out there, which are supposed to be coming very soon. And that might be helpful, but it's been a long time coming. It's been at least five years, and if it's another five years, I'll be thankful if we ever get traffic signals out there. Clearly, they're needed. I think everyone, probably most people who have driven through there have had to change lanes rapidly to avoid collisions. And it's just a daily event out there, so my hope is that we get those traffic lights sooner than later. The other thing that I'll just let you know, we talked about the Douglas Center restrooms. Those are now advertised for contractors. We plan to open those proposals later in November. I think the date is the seventeenth or the twentieth. But as soon as we have the proposals back and we can evaluate all of them and bring a recommendation back to the board, we will. So hopefully, we'll have that by the end of November. And that's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I just want to add to what Mr. Harris was talking about, the meeting with DOT. I was there, Chief Summers was there, Mr. Pittman was there. I want to thank all of them for being there, and it was the first time I've actually seen Mr. Harris in a debate, if you will. He's very adamant about certain things and gets very excited about certain things. But it was, it was good to see him be excited about a, a problem that we have and we need to fix it. But I do agree with you. I think they hurt us, and I do think that they're going to take notice of that, and.
Well, good.
We got something in the future to look forward to out there. So, thank you all, everyone that was there.
Moving on to item nineteen, Board members' requests, comments. Start with you, Mr. Hale.
Pretty much, nothing else.
Sessions?
Well, to go along with what Mr. Harris and Mr. Hale were speaking about, I present, I am on a board that goes, I am in safety meetings with FHP. And I've been to two, two of these safety meetings and brought the exact same things we're talking about with them over in, in Lake City, with the DOT involved and the FHP involved too. So now we've got two fronts working on, you know, in the next meeting that, that I have, I'll invite you two to come with me also. Because there's a few different people in that meeting than there probably was in the meeting you were at. But the more we put the pressure on them, the better it'll be for us.
I agree.
Mr. Richardson?
Just like to commend the Sheriff's Department. They worked through this past weekend in catching our, our bank robber down in Branford. Said Sheriff, that legislative meeting yesterday and gave some information on it. Fifteen minutes from the time that it happened to the time that the man was caught, a little bit of help from some concerned citizens. And, you know, that's the kind of things that make community a little bit more better, a little bit better every, every day.
That it? Mr. Fleming?
I really don't have a comment. I just, proud to know that Mr. Harris and Commissioner Hale went to DOT. Commissioner Sessions, and I think we attend the same meeting, but at different times. We all butt up together. But I think it would be helpful because I travel that area all the time. And it's very, very dangerous out there, and the more that we bring it to the forefront, talk about it, share it with them. Me and the sheriff went over to Lake City at Highway Patrol Station and we shared some thoughts about it. And that's something that's much needed in this area. But that's all I have to say.
Thank you. The only thing I had to say tonight was what Mr. Ford touched on. I've brought several of these with me. If anybody has one, would like one to put up somewhere, let me know, and I'll get it for you after the meeting. But other than that, I don't have anything, and I thank everyone for coming out. I just need one thing, fellas.
Motion to adjourn.
Got a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Fleming.
Second.
And by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.